All right, it's noon and we have a quorum. And so it looks to me, other than discussing the commissioner's meeting itself agenda, there are three items associated with the work session. One would be the liquid fuels allocation, the second is bid on some vehicles, and then the third is a feasibility study. And given the fact that we have a guest to talk about the feasibility study, could we go ahead?
Actually, I was gonna say, why don't you do the other two because those won't take long. Like, I have to get this presentation.
Oh, you're good, okay, very good, all right. Liquid fuels, we'll start with that. I didn't realize you were doing a presentation.
Yeah.
So in your packets, Pam has put a number of liquid fuel allocation options. It looks like there's four of them to be distributed based on what we're estimating for 2023. The first one is if we were to distribute 115,000, then that would leave us 32,795 left in our checking account. The second would be 125,000, which would leave 22,795 in our checking account. The third would be distributing 130,000, which would leave 17,795 in our checking account. And then the fourth would be 135,000, leaving $12,795 in our checking account. So any of you have any thoughts or comments on what you would choose as a recommendation and why?
Because of what happened with COVID and we were short on what we were given, I would go 30,000, leaving the 17. And that way, if there is another uptick and nobody's traveling, it gives us a little bit of cushion.
Okay. Because then we can make up that shortfall to next year with what's left.
Yes.
In the plan. Okay. Very good, any other comments or discussion from anybody about that? No?
And then I'll have that on the agenda in a resolution for Wednesday.
Okay. And then secondly would be, we did have a number of bids for two Ford Explorers. It looks like we asked the bid start prices to be $1,000 each. There was a 2014 Explorer, a 2013 Explorer. 2014 Explorer has a front fender damage, and the 2013 has a passenger door panel missing.
The passenger door panel's missing. This used to be the old K-9 vehicle. So they take those off and we cannot locate them. But it did give us a, still gave us a $4,000 bid.
Okay, so there are a number of bids here.
My only question is, it was brought to my attention this morning that, you know, for the future, there is a box when we put them online to, we don't extend the auction. These two bids were at 5:27 and 5:33. I didn't mark that box. So somebody bid, it extended it three minutes. Somebody bids, it extends it another three minutes. Our bid was advertised to end at 5 o'clock. So we can either reject these and go back out to start, or go ahead and accept these and then in the future buy note to mark that box so that it stops at 5 o'clock and it doesn't keep extending it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I...
That's pretty common.
Yeah.
I don't see why that's a problem.
I don't think that would be a problem.
I don't know how it's having that fair.
I would just say, like, in the future, when you advertise it, not have, like, an end time per sale, like if they're doing electronic, you know, that it starts at a given time and it ends when nobody bids anymore.
You still have to give it an end date or an end time so that...
Yeah, stop.
That would stop if nobody bids.
And that's, and that's what you could just add that as a caveat? Yeah.
Right, I get that you would set a time so that it ends if nobody bids, but I, you know, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we'll have that also on Wednesday. The sold amounts for the 2014 Explorer, $4,650, and for 2013 Explorer, $4,050. As far as the, I'm just gonna skip over to the commissioner's meeting. So are you still?
Yeah, my laptop had to have updates, so now it's updating, so.
Okay, we'll skip over to the commissioner's meeting agenda just for a minute while we're waiting for the laptop to update. So we've got proclamations of leading disorder awareness month, American Red Cross month, and gambling awareness month. And then new business, just moving down to that. We will have recommendation for appointments to the conservation district order directors.
And then I did get also, there's a couple of repository tax bids.
Okay, why the repository tax bids?
And that's about it.
And then a couple of resolution, and a resolution for some more policy and procedures.
Yes, which is the vehicle maintenance policy and...
And another one. Was that that? And another one?
Oh, well, yeah, another one.
We also had the election, an election-related procedure that has to go before election board, I guess.
Well, that and we're waiting on info, input from Nathaniel.
Oh, that's right. Pushed out, I haven't been able to.
Okay.
What is that second?
Was that the one for the coroner? I don't know.
No, the coroner taps out on her own.
Because you had a couple of edits.
Yeah. Well, I can't remember, I guess I sent an email out about it.
Did you have it in the email, didn't you? Okay. And I don't have the contents of that in front of me.
Yeah. But the important one is vehicle maintenance policy so that we can start and get rid of the $6 fleet charge on the price.
Right.
Keep track of our own maintenance.
Okay. Do you feel more prepared for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess we should just get started because God knows when this is gonna work. Sorry, actually, if I can get it written on that wall, but it's just like...
Is it the same proposal that we have in writing?
Yeah, they submitted it, or we had circulated it a couple times, but last week. So we wanted to schedule a meeting with Larson in order to have a discussion with commissioners generally about the renovation project where it stands and what we need to do to move forward.
All right, sounds great. So hand it over to Shane to discuss.
Yes, I thought we could.
Well, this has been updated since the last one.
Okay.
But it's the same, same ones that you sent you to.
Electronically?
Mm-hmm.
Does there are a few more colorful pictures in there?
Uh, from the one previous, yes. I've been gradually working at this. Things that I've found recently. We did one, what, five years ago, feasibility study, about five years ago. So the project had been done with the slip roofing, the flat roof on the 25 edition. And there was some painting of the metal, but it was not entirely done. You can tell that when you walk by, it's really bright. Lovely stuff from the old Indy. So, uh, in here, firstly, just a letter from the foregiving. The next one is just a table of contents, so. But then we have, also, we're building code review, which is, you know, just saying what the code review required, which isn't really much, it's more of repairs. And there may be some alteration level one, which is just replacing one for another. Next one is just, they updated a little earth map of the building showing the original 1876 courthouse and various additions. You have one in 1925, one in 1980, and one in 2003.
That's another one.
And along with this, though, we may get a gentleman by the name of Charlie Huir involved. He's a historical preservation person. Just make sure what you can or cannot do.
Right.
When we get into more of the construction growing portion.
Is he local or where?
I remember from where he's out of.
Okay.
No, he's not that far away. Do you know where he's local or...
He's still from another town.
Pardon?
He's still from another town.
Yes. So, and beyond that, we have basically a building conditions assessment. And some of this has not changed from five years ago. And right now, we're not doing anything with the foundation flooring, columns being or anything like that, so nothing structural. So we just, it's mainly the building exterior part. And that would be, you know, the basic brick repair. To look out there and see the windows, the wood part is, it's all painted, peeling and what have you. And I understand that somebody's contacted Aegis about some possibly justice testing to make sure where it is, where it is.
There is somebody coming on Wednesday to meet with Wally.
Yes, Wally called me this morning. And my main concern for justice would be the perimeter sealant around the windows, possibly in the ceiling of the courtroom. It needs painting. Those are my two major concerns. Whoever comes in and does the testing or looks it over will give you an idea of what else may need to be tested. With that said, I was, skip over most of this. We did, we did do some things that were not done in the previous project, such as some attic ventilation. There were some things in there, I don't know if it was done in-house or just not done at all. There were, there's holes in the attic floors, you know, right through into the various rooms.
In the attic floor, you say?
Yes, somebody had cut holes in there for access to above the ceiling. And there's been some, some places where there was insulation put in, and some is missing, some is just gonna move around. So I don't know if anything had been done about that, but somewhere to go. And then, other than that, the last project, we did the slate roofing, some painting, a new rubber membrane roof on the 1925 edition. That was done separately from the other project, the slate roof project. There's also some downspouts put in. I don't know exactly how to say it, it's not, they're not very aesthetically pleasing. So you'll see that in here, one of the recommendations would be to possibly paint those so that we can blend more into brick and what have you. Once you're okay with the white downspouts coming in, the domes. There's really nothing ever historically correct about it because they used to have the, you know, rainwater would come in the gutters and into the building and down into the...
Waters.
What I was thinking is it used to be just, they used to just have a, maybe one line going down to the sanitary storm, everything's all together. And I'm thinking that they separated it out at one point in time. I, nobody knows exactly what that point in time is.
They took this one and went across the parking lot into that room?
Probably.
Well, that was part of the last.
Probably, because there were some, they did this way back when, in 2018, when they did the rubber roof. They also did the downspouts, which just replaced ones from there. So neither of them were historically correct. And the main thing would have been, what I want more of was the photographs, card in the back, which would be a lot easier to see up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How's it going?
Would be, would be a lot easier to see up there. My, this, I don't know what's going on with this laptop. We just, we just keep talking chain eventually.
I don't know. But any of the photographs, you can see, the first couple are just a photograph of the courthouse back in 1877. And that one is just, they just were permission. And you'll go through here and you'll see where I'm talking about these urns and rails that used to be there. And that's kind of a wish list thing down there, some place if you ever want to replace them. And I was told, when Matt was here, that he had one store away, one of the urns. I don't think I got the exact location of it, pretty fit he had one store away.
Well, we might know where it's at.
So I am thinking it might be the warehouse on the six.
Yeah.
Are you sure about the urns over there?
Up front?
Up front?
They would have been on Fourth Street slightly. You can see one here, one there.
The roof fern, yeah. I know, I know, there's one scroll away somewhere upstairs.
What, what does a roof fern do?
Nothing.
Definitely. That's all.
I saw there was one over there. I have a clean second.
There's one in the warehouse?
That.
So why don't we actually start from the end and then work our way back? So the, the proposal has, it's separated into pieces. So in order to facilitate grant funding and also just understand, like, how we can do this in pieces if need be. So first piece is the, the painting and renovation of the building, which is the remainder of the feasibility study that we did previously. So everything below the roof line that is essentially in rough shape that needs to be upgraded. So that's one piece of it.
The other part of that is, I went back to the previous project and found out they did not do some painting above.
Okay, well, whatever some wasn't done in the first stretch, okay? And then that's the first part of their proposal. And I can't remember what the total cost was for all that work for the issue, which includes, like, brick and masonry and, and all the other items. Was it 800?
I think your total cost was at 828,400. But that does not include architectural engineering fees. And I was not sure whether that should go in this one or the one for the 1980, 2003 additions.
Yeah, I'd split it up and have them each be their own thing.
Correct, I'll have to figure out. I'll have to get into it and find out how he wants to split up the fee. If he wants to split out the fee or just put it under one.
Yeah.
Because right now, we have it all bunched into one fee.
Yep, okay. And so that involves the windows, like, all the exterior, you know, cleaning up the brick, fixing masonry, like, and these are areas where there's cracks in the walls that need to be readjusted because there are technical structural concerns with the facility. So that piece is, is really important that we fit.
That's the majority of the, is that the 557,000? That is at the top of the opinion of probable cost list dated 1 January 5th, 2023?
No, this one's dated February 1st.
Oh, so I have an old one then?
Correct.
Okay.
So what we have for the exterior work, and this is, this is just construction wise, the exterior work for the 1876 building, 1925 edition, would be 615,000, get it or take it?
Oh, that is a lot different.
Yeah.
So that's just for those two pieces?
Yes, that would include the exterior painting as well as the brick and stone repainting. And also include the steps on the south side by Fourth Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Fourth Avenue.
Fourth Avenue.
Okay.
And then there's, there's one, the concrete steps on the Market Street side that has, needs some repair. Yeah, it's kind of hard to show. If you have, if you have the pictures, you can go through them and look, and it's all labeled after what's what.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's, then there's a lot of the stone that needs to be repainted, which is basically clean out mortar, you know, putting new mortar or something in the joints to keep water out. Water being your number one enemy of the building. So if you get water in there, it'll freeze and crack, crack your brick and stone, what have you. So.
So then...
The, or...
Go ahead.
And then part of this first opinion of probable cost would be patch and repair of the courtroom sealant. There's cracks in the plaster, beams, and it was stained in some places due to the, apparently it was a roof leak or something at one point in time. And so it's stained, it had been repainted a few years back, but got it before, got ran out. So.
That's a lot.
At this point, it's not a structural hazard, but it is an essay thing.
And it's very noticeable and will continue to deteriorate if we don't address it.
And that is, that is another area that should be looked into, I'm sure is there was justice in the plaster, that sealant. Not worried about the paint because it's post 1985, so there shouldn't be any lifting at all. And I'm not sure exactly what was done in that project. Whether they replaced it, plaster, I don't think they did, maybe finished it. So, other than that, all the rest of the costs are just things like general conditions, overhead and profit for contractor, construction contingency. We had 95,300 construction contingency for anything that's unseen. So we're at, as we get, construction related activities, 809,700.
Eight, no, not for everything.
That is just for construction.
So if I were to go through this, like, opinion of probable cost at the bottom here was 896, what's that new total?
The new total is all related costs. And they would be things like testing, building permits, inspections. And then you want to carry, you know, some builder risk insurance plus a little contingency of your own case to case. And then the whole of that would be also the architectural engineering fees, which we did not add in there. I wasn't really sure, I wasn't even aware that was gonna go. And, and then how your funding works.
Yeah, so they did, you know, definitely did talk to them, you know, separated between the two just because we're gonna end up doing grants for different, for each piece.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, is how do we separate these?
Well, this, this is entirely based on, you know, stuff like the historical museum commission just because the, the age of the building and the stuff that we're doing is, you know, renovating the building to look historically accurate. So we do a grant application for this. The other stuff in this package, which is the next page, is stuff that's associated with the jail and the back of the building and other things that are not historic. So those would be a little bit more challenging to get grant funding for.
Okay. I guess, can you pull that up or no?
I, I'm trying, I can't, I don't...
Well, maybe we can just get an updated one at some point.
The, the, yeah, the costs are very similar.
Okay.
That, then we have it on these buildings, the 1876 and the 1925 edition, that's all this covers. Then the next opinion of probable cost would be for the 1980 edition, the jail edition, and the 2003 edition, which is magnitude.
Okay.
So not really much on the 2003 edition other than the, what's called EFIS or exterior inspection system. And when you walk out, out into the parking lot, turn on and look up, you can see that it's all stained from years of water and dirt, what have you, running over it. So that needs to be addressed. And can't really find many drawings on it to see what the detail is like that. I don't know if you really have anything like that around.
Drawings on the, the...
Yeah, we, we have floor plans, but we do not have the details, wall sections details and things like that.
We, we could look, I mean, there's, there's a ton of maps and stuff down in the basement, like, in the maintenance room and stuff like that. I mean, we could sift through that and try to find something.
That, that stuff you have also in the warehouse?
I, I don't know, I mean, maybe, maybe...
There's a lot of maps in the warehouse.
Maybe it was moved to the warehouse. I mean, if it's the addition, there should be stuff because there was stuff there, you know, six, seven years ago. And then as far as the jail goes, I'm not 100% sure because there's, that's a bit older. And I don't know, I don't know how much we've got on that.
Anyhow, the, like I said, not too much on the 2003 edition, but on the 1980 edition, mostly on the Market Street side. You can see where the brick is cracked, especially about the windows. And once again, the windows, which are the steel part that holds the brick, machinery, everything above, those are rusting and probably should be cleaned at the end just to prevent any more rust. And then also on that side, where the sheriff's entrance is, you look on both sides, you can see moss and dirt and what have you coming down the face of the brick. There's some spal brick, and spal brick is just really, where age just kind of, you know, frost and what have you, just to kind of take off the brick. So, and those should be addressed before too much more damage to the brick take place. As I said, the more water gets in there, the more ice builds up, and the worse the problem gets.
And so what I'm...
That's pretty much it.
Yeah, so what I'm looking through, so what's the total for that one?
Total for that would be, just the construction related would be about 188, 189,000. Total, including your cost, would be somewhere around 194,000, 195,000.
For the clam. But the other parts of the building.
Yes.
So I think a portion of this we can get grant funding for.
The, the, this side? The, the side, yeah.
Historical side. And then there's another portion that has repairs that is not historically related, which, and that totals in the upper 150 area, $150,000-ish?
For everything else. So it's 850 for this side, like the historic building up to the jail and the addition. And the addition and the jail is 150, 160 to do to, and again, this is to.
Closer to 200.
Closer to 200 to clean out the exterior of the buildings. And so my recommendation would be we take two weeks so that, till the next work session, so that the commissioners can review this in detail and look at it. And then we can revisit it in two weeks. And maybe by then I'll have my laptop working.
Maybe we're doing that.
Or maybe we can discuss it then, because I think that, I think that there needs to be more time to review it on the commissioner's side.
Okay.
Before you, you know, see the photographs of various areas of the jail.
Cool, okay, that sounds great. That's good. Well, I mean, it's an old building, so I mean.
Yes.
Takes money to set back up, but I think Jeff, you had some ideas on funding, right?
Well, so the, the, this kind of, this larger price type makes sense in the grand scheme of things, especially with inflation and construction costs.
Oh, yeah.
The, the, the work that's incorporated into these, you know, is needed. The question is, is how and when it's done. So like with historic museum commission, we could hypothetically get, you know, like $150,000 out of that taken out. There are other foundations that are associated with historic buildings that we could go after. The challenge that we always have is, is being a municipal government, you know, who's trying to figure out ways to fundraise that. You know, it's hard to say how it's all gonna shake out, but I think that, you know, between now and then, having everybody, you know, take a deep dive and look at it and read through it and then maybe revisit it and have a discussion in a couple of weeks would be a good thing just because it's a lot, there's a lot in there.
See, there's a lot in there. Well, I mean, there's a lot to be done, it looks like, it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, when we did the first renovation, we handled all of the really major things, which was the roof and items that were, would cause problems with the rest of the constitution of the building. So we took care of those in that stretch. And since then, obviously, with the rest of the paint, like the windows, the exterior of the building continued to deteriorate, the windows especially. And we're at a point now where we really don't have any more time to wait to address them. And so this, this is, you know, Larson's best guess of how we would do that and what the cost would be, so.
Are there any specific types of contractors that we would need to hire because it is a historical building?
Well, this is one of the things that generally comes up when we even discuss this is people in the community will call and say, you should hire local, like you should have local people do this. And I'm not saying that local people explicitly can't do it, but the, because of the nature of the building, you have to have somebody that has experience with historic structures because there's a lot of fabrication that has to go on with some of the elements of it. And you can't, it can't just be a local, like necessarily a local contractor that would be capable of handling it, especially when you get up high and you're using a lift and, you know, a lot of this stuff. So generally, we'll have, we'll have Larson, we would have Larson put together bid specs that would be very specific, and then we would end up hopefully with a contractor like dependable or durable restoration company like we had out of Maryland, who did an exceptional job on renovating the top end of the building. So they, they're usually better at getting done on time, they usually do a better job, and they were actually under budget, I believe, when they got done, so.
All right. And then I don't see anything here as it relates to the agenda for Wednesday. We don't have any correspondence. Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah.
It all depending on when you put your mail.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, we'll go over that, I think, next time.
Well, thank you very much for coming, yes. So it's a work to be done. Oh, no, it's all good, all good. We'll work on the electronic piece of this next time.
All right, yeah, if you have any questions, I can just, you know.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So we'll have correspondence here and then witness the conservation district board and graphics. All right, anything else? Will it be over? Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you very much, have a good day.